I'll go to you.
Let's just answer it.
I have a history of home trying tires. You know where Trigone Park Road is?
I do.
That's vicious on tires. Because they narrowed it down. And we have to watch the time really a lot tonight, so I don't have a gavel, so.
Oh, I have a gavel for you.
Oh, that's okay. Meeting called to order and we'll pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so I will begin by reading the recording statement. I remind everyone that this meeting is to be in telecast and occurred on channel fourteen. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio recording of open session of this meeting to first notify me as chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Steve?
That's it.
No, okay, okay. So, um, public comment, is there any public? Hmm?
We have the bowl.
I know, but we'll do public comment.
Oh, God.
Okay, okay, so, um, there's no public comments, so we'll move along to the bowl.
I love that part, I love it so much.
Okay, so, and white is elementary, I believe?
Yeah.
So this is from Avery at T Ticket, who says that in class, students help each other learn by paying attention and listening.
What school was that?
T Ticket.
T Ticket.
And then I go Gray next. And this is from Dennis at Lawrence School. My teacher lets me share my questions and opinions with him and the class. High school, and this is from Katrina, Falmouth High School. Clipper Time has helped me by providing a time where I can do my homework. And what's this? If I have a lot of plans after school. So Clipper Time has helped me by providing a time where I can do my homework if I had a lot of plans after school. So that would be helpful.
Great.
Okay.
Got it.
As ever, we love to hear from the kids. Okay, I thought the maroons want to get better because they're white on the back, but yeah, okay. Next, we will do as we do now, um, to read the mission statement.
Okay, the mission of the Falmouth Public Schools is to educate students so that they are engaged in their education in a way which develops their capacity to pursue the goals and foster lifelong learning. The three core beliefs which define us as a school system and enable us to accomplish our mission are continuous improvement for students, teachers, staff, and administrators, enthusiasm for teaching and learning, collaboration in teaching and learning, and the role the school committee is grateful to write policy, to approve the operating budget, and to hire the superintendent and support her in carrying out her initiatives for the district.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
You're welcome.
Now, considering that Leah is underway from the vineyard, um, and she's on the agenda, would anybody object if we juggled the order of the items? Okay, so could we skip down to the six thirty P M. item? Which is to act on a donation, a two thousand dollar donation from the Carousel of Light. Is there a motion to approve it?
Only a motion to approve the donation from the Carousel of Light.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, um, now, is there any comments or discussion on this motion?
I just, I don't remember. So this was from the, the, um, the last contract that just says that it's a donation, correct?
Correct, correct.
And then I think the only other piece was that we were supposed to get a copy of their tax return or their financials or something like that.
Nine nineties.
Nine nine.
They do provide nine nineties, but they're always a year advance.
A year behind?
Behind, right.
Okay.
Yeah, so when we get that, we'll share those.
Awesome, thanks.
Okay, going forward, there may be some other titles for this money that we get from the Carousel of Light, but this year we called it a donation, so is there any other discussion? Okay, then we'll take a vote, all those in favor of approving the donation from the Carousel of Light?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to, um, consider changing the meeting date from December eleventh to December eighteenth. Is there a mo- may I please have a motion to do for this?
I have a motion to change the meeting date from the eleventh to the eighteenth.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, Lori will discuss this then.
So, um, the, with the change of going back out to, uh, the, um, with the structure separate from the field, we believe that, uh, we will have the bid opening and be ready to, um, to vote on that portion of it by December eighteenth, would not be ready by December eleven. Uh, and we want those in before we take the field out so that they can use the specs from the building that we're gonna purchase, so it'll be right in to the field, um, RFP. So, we, we thought about whether, should we have two meetings in December, two weeks back to back, which, you know, didn't make much sense, but just to have one meeting and to move it from just the eleventh to the eighteenth, so we still have the one meeting in December.
Okay, are there any other comments about changing the date?
Uh, just a question, will it be at the administration building? Or are we gonna go to, is that in the rotation of going to another school? But still at the ad building?
Still at the.
Just for clarity, thank you.
Yeah. Always good to clarify since we're changing a lot this year.
Correct.
That's very good, you have to clarify. Okay, are there no other comments then? Okay, so all those who are in favor of changing the date from the eleventh to the eighteenth, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, so that works fast. The next item would be to, um, vote on accepting a Gaga, as in lady, maybe? Forget it, I'm trying not to be joking around, as my role as the chair, I'm not, should be more serious. Okay, to act. It'll never, it'll never happen, so I'll pick my own way to raise my bread. Okay, to act on the Gaga pit for the Morse Pond Playground, is there a motion?
Yeah, roll.
Okay.
I'm motion approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, now, discussion.
These things are supposed to be awesome, I'm so excited.
Isn't it just like a fenced in area?
And then they throw balls, the kids love it, I don't know. They just do, there's a ball inside, it's really fast, it's like a really fast game.
So this is a game with a ball inside?
Yeah.
Okay, because at first glance, and it looks just like a playpen for, um, fifth and sixth grade.
It's kind of like, uh, four square a little bit?
Okay.
But with more people, right? More people play.
I see, okay.
North Falmouth has one.
Yes.
And, um, and Tim Adams says the kids absolutely love it.
We'll have to speak to some. Where is it going on the playground, is it going near the structure toward the street, or do we know yet?
It's gonna be, um, the, the ideal place will be sort of nearer the basketball court direction. They're gonna confirm with the DPW location.
Okay, cool. Great.
Um, so I noticed that it was talking about, um, the base, and it's either gonna be the stone dust or rubberized material, and I was wondering how that determination was being made and what the alternative material actually was.
Um, the cost, um, they're, they're hoping to do the, um, the rubberized mat, um, for the base of it. So it's gonna depend on, on that, when they get the cost back on that, it'll be one or the other, yeah.
What does North Falmouth have right now in their pit? Nothing.
I don't think it, I think it's dirt, I think it's dirt.
It's a dirt pit?
Yeah, I think it's.
John?
Uh, I had a chance to talk to some of the staff at North Falmouth, and, uh, because in the visual of it, at first, when you look at it, it has sort of like an octagon type effect, and you would think maybe, kind of intuitively, you might think, you know, it would have both bullying potential and whatnot just because of the, the game's confinement, um, and with relation to kids with special needs or with physical challenges. And it was quite the opposite, that it actually enabled them to be even more engaged in the game because it stayed in the, in a set area, and it was more controlled rather than just being all over the place. So I was actually pleasantly surprised by hearing that information.
Do we know, do I wonder if one, like a panel swings so that somebody in a wheelchair could get in?
At most.
At most, right?
Okay, and one thing we always, or we often consider when accepting gifts, um, or things like this is the maintenance of it down the road, is there any discussion of that?
So, one of the reasons we're, we're trying to be a little more, um, cognizant of putting these on the school committee agenda is to recognize that the DPW is not, um, taking responsibility for this. It's, they don't have any wherewithal on this, so the PTO would understand that it would there be, it would be their ongoing responsibility. So that, uh, that's understood, and they're excited about it. But, you know, asking the DPW to sort of take on this and that and that, or after the fact, is, is, uh, something that they, they'll help, but they don't want to be primarily responsible for, for these kind of things, so.
Would that be a written MOU, or?
With the, with the PTO?
Yes.
Uh, that's probably a, a good idea, to create, uh, an ongoing relationship in writing with them, that they'll take responsibility for.
Especially since the PTO has changed constantly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little bit more.
Yeah.
Melissa and Andrea?
Um, just a question, the PTO is funding this whole, uh, Gaga pit as well as the installation of it, or are we asking the DPW for help with installation?
Nope, nope, they, they were gonna do it.
Great, excellent, good for them.
Um, I just wanted to ask, um, about, um, anonymous donations. Um, I'm assuming it wouldn't come before us if there was an issue with that, and it seems like this was the same donor that had donated the one for North Falmouth. I guess, I'm also wondering how long ago was that, did that also come before school committee?
No, I, that's why I'm, I was pushing to make sure this one, I don't, bluntly, I don't know about the timing of that, all of a sudden, it was just there, from my perspective, from my perspective. There, there definitely probably was communication between the principal and previous superintendents. That's, so that's why I'm just, this is school grounds, we, we should be cognizant of what's on school grounds. They were very comfortable, it's been extremely well received, I mean, kids are head over heels on it, so from that perspective, it's really, uh, terrific, terrific decision.
But there's no problems like with an auditor or anything like that on an anonymous donation, okay?
No, no, no. And it's gonna, it's going through the PTO.
Okay, are there any other, one other little thing I'm thinking about, what about East and T Ticket?
East, I can speak to East, and our big, um, thing that we're trying to fund right now is still the, uh, outdoor classroom. There are any anonymous donors? Um, I'm sure that we can certainly look at a Gaga pit because I'm sure that word is going to travel fast with older siblings, so I can speak to East, um, I can't really speak to T Ticket. We're all in, yeah.
Yeah, if we can be proactive rather than reactive, that's.
I can certainly bring this to our next PTO meeting, which is next Wednesday.
Okay, so, without further, is there any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor of accepting the anonymous donation of the Gaga pit, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so, now that our, um, observation evaluation person has arrived, over the high seas, we shifted ahead to go back.
Boats ran all day today, it's amazing. Um, I don't know, how did this happen, because I just sent this.
Um, because we have.
Superhero.
Superhero, yeah, like, literally. Okay, that's impressive.
She is impressive.
Did you just?
She is impressive, so I left them there.
Wow.
That's what she.
Because literally, that was probably twenty minutes ago, right?
Yeah, that's what I read on my phone.
In the minutes.
Yeah.
See now, we were gonna act as if we planned to handle that.
I know, you looked really good for it.
So I, I've got to say, it is my birthday today, and I thought that this was a birthday present to me because I was like, wow, that is amazing, this is exactly what I wanted, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Do it the same, maybe we'll sing and tell me.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, evaluation, um, so I did, I wanted to go over just the timeline first, and then we can go over the goals, does that sound good? Um, so, I did email you guys this stuff, but that again, was about twenty-five minutes ago. It will be ready for you when you're ready to look at it at home. So I'm gonna go over just our timeline, um, Natalie, Lori, and I met on.
Three weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Yeah, on Halloween, or on the thirtieth, on the thirtieth. Um, and we agreed upon a timeline, that timeline that we wanted to, um, run by you guys, and then, um, about renewing our commitments to the goals, and, um, we did a review of the superintendent's goals and offered feedback, and, um, so now we're here on the November thirteenth meeting, where today, we're sharing the superintendent's goals with the whole school committee. We're reviewing the timeline, which I'm doing right now, and the process for observations, and, um, observation possibilities shared. So Sharon, are you gonna be able to email some ideas for observations? Okay, that would be great, um, so we'll get, we'll get some things that Lori's doing to go see her in action. Um, and we will all see Lori in action, if you're a town meeting member, um, tomorrow. Coffee, for coffee.
For the coffee, yes, absolutely.
Um, and if you have, and tonight we'll see her in action at.
I think tonight will be a little bit more juicy than the coffee, but.
Well, the coffee is a nice way to go with your goals, so. Um, and the question that I have is, have you observed Dr. Door? Um, and if you have, that we have now the observation forms that you can fill out, so if it's fresh enough in your mind to use that observation and to do a write-up, that would be great, and, um, that would be great.
Do you want to know what they were, so, doesn't matter?
Um, sure.
Like, are we gonna try and make sure that we cover a variety of things?
Um, we, I, it doesn't, it doesn't.
It'll warn our people.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I think, you know, if you've observed, Lori, you're gonna go through the process of writing it up, and then meeting with Lori to go over your observation, and getting any feedback from Lori about that, and then, um, you can submit that to me, the observation. So, with, yes.
Just quick, uh, just refresh my memory, how many observations would you like from each of us?
So, one.
Okay, perfect, easy.
Yes, our goal is to have six from the nine of us.
Yeah.
So, um.
Okay.
So we're, we're starting low, we'll see how we go this year. Last year, we did get six, the year before, I don't think we got six.
I don't know.
It's been, okay, it's been a, it's been a goal that we've been working at.
Okay, if nothing else, it makes our, our understanding of the goals more meaningful.
Yeah.
Even if there's not.
So on December eleventh, um, we're going to meet as the evaluation subcommittee to review the mid-cycle evaluation, and then on the eighth of January, Lori will be presenting her mid-cycle evaluation, and then on March twenty-sixth, there'll be a presentation on completing the superintendent evaluation, the summative evaluation that we all do individually, and then, um, March thirtieth is the deadline to submit the individual observations to me, and, um, then on Sunday, April seventh, make sure you know this date, that's the deadline for all your individual evaluations, and that is a Sunday, and then on Tuesday, I calibrate all of that with the help of subcommittee to help me. So it is really important to have everything back to me on, um, April seventh.
Before you go any further, that date that everyone wrote down, the first one, it'll be the eighteenth of December now, won't it?
No, this is their subcommittee, so their subcommittee meeting probably isn't going to change.
Okay.
Because that's not gonna be contingent on the field.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, okay, and then, um, April twenty-third is the presentation of this summative evaluation, um, to the superintendent, so this is just when Lori and I will meet, and then on May seventh, will be the summative evaluation presentation and vote. And then we're gonna be, great, June eleventh, we're gonna set the dates for the first evaluation subcommittee for the next year. We'll be all getting things moving.
When is the election?
Well, it's usually second week of May.
Isn't it the sixth, it's after, okay.
Yes, we purposely do the, it's like the week before.
That's why it's so tight.
Yeah.
It's okay.
So, um, here is this amazing form that just came out of thin air here of, um, this is the observation form, now, you don't have to use it, it's just, it's, it's for you if you'd like to use it. It has all of the goals and the standards there, so you can actually check off what you're seeing in action, and the first part of it has, you know, just like, who you are, the location, the event, the date, and then what Lori's doing, and then what the audience is doing, which is a nice way to get a sense of the overall vibe of things, yes. Um, you'll also see in the email from me that there are Walters', um, his, his exemplars that we worked on that had, um, the, the evidence with the judgment, so that, you know, when you are putting your opinion out there, you want to make sure that you have some evidence to back that up. So it's a, it's a nice thing that Walter has left us, and, um, so that is in the email, um, along with a blank form.
An abuse?
Not that, so that one's in a separate email, and then you'll have a blank, um, form that basically has evidence, comments, and observation, recommendations, and then additional input from Lori, um, so that's what you will write up after, this is for note-taking, and then you write up that, that's kind of your official observation form, that you then go, have a meeting with Lori and go over, and then submit to me.
In regards to those meetings, I'm guilty, we're all guilty, you wait till the last minute, and then poor Lori's bombarded with people requesting meetings, so just to keep that in your head, and to reiterate that, get it in by the due date.
Yeah.
Oh, you should've said Saturday instead of Sunday.
I know, but, you know, yes, um, and the nice thing is, is that if you're going to do an observation, you have a nice form ready for you for the next couple of days, so, it's good. Um, so Lori, let's get over your goals.
All right, so, um, we have three goals, a district improvement goal, a student learning goal, and the professional practice goal. Um, the first one, uh, is essentially, um, the, um, entry plan that I shared, the listening and learning tour, uh, at the August retreat session. So that's, um, basically establishing public trust and, and support through open and honest communication, creating the Falmouth Student Achievement Plan that builds upon the current successes of each school, determining the social, emotional, and health needs of Falmouth students, and expand on the current strategies to meet the needs of all students, establishing a clear strategy to address school safety, security, and culture in every Falmouth school. And then I have, um, the key timelines. So coming up, um, you know, so number one, uh, by mid-August, I did present the plan, uh, and then, uh, at the December meeting, we're going to, um, present the findings, and we will be ready to do that, the, um, central office team has worked through all, gathering all the information from all the notes of all the sessions, and, um, so we'll have findings for you in December. Uh, and, uh, the student learning goal, um, this is effectively focused on equity access and opportunities for students, and through the evaluations, um, with the district administrators, making sure that we stay on, um, schedule, and that, um, the end goal being that the, um, the administrator, um, evaluations exceed a rating of seventy-five percent of the goals. And the professional practice goal, um, is the new superintendent induction program, and so attending the meetings, um, completing the assignments, uh, meeting with my coach, um, and getting, um, proficiency ratings, at least proficiency ratings on everything.
So one thing that we, we did talk about is having the three goals is a really nice way to start this year. Um, and I know that Lori seemed like, oh, you know, there were more, the past superintendent had more goals, but I think three is a really nice way to, to focus what, you know, the start of your career here, and, um, so we all talked about that and agreed on that.
The induction program, is that state requirement?
For every superintendent.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I just ask how this, how you think this process will be different from ones in the past where, you know, Nancy had been here for a while, so she kind of had that binder full of things that you, she has done, and how, you know, with it, you're not even being here a year, I'm just curious how that, how that works, finding the evidence to, to make sure that those rules are being reached. For those of you who have been on here longer than a year, what's it?
So Sharon and I have been building the binder since, um, August, or before, maybe. Um, so, yeah, so we've actually been building it, we, uh, we're using all the indicators, all forty-one indicators, and we're just as, I do think we're just putting them under the, um, each indicator as we go along, so, um, so everyone will have that to review.
So that will still be a great reference for us.
Okay.
Just a comment on that, that even though the, whatever, regardless of the tenure, we were always just analyzing that previous year.
Year, right, yeah.
I'm sorry, John, I didn't understand.
Regardless of the tenure of the individual, we were always just judging by what that previous year.
One year, one year.
Activity was.
Instruments.
Yeah, correct, okay.
Sorry.
Yes?
Um, I had two items, um, one, um, because last year, like Megan, it was first year doing this, um, something that I noticed when you get to the point where you're going through all the evidence, um, that it becomes really important that the, as you're trying to make these fine distinctions between levels of meeting and exceeding and all that, that, um, you actually have something to measure that against, and so I really do like these measures that you've put in there. Um, because I think the, the tighter the goals are, when they're, when they have some looser language in it, it's, it's hard to pin down where you're gonna put that mark, so, um, so I do appreciate that. Um, and then the other piece, sort of more in general about the process, is that, um, I understand the hard deadline in April, um, early April, because of getting all this done, um, before May. But one thing I also wonder is, um, about backing this up a little bit earlier in the year as well, because here we are at November, when we're doing this piece of it, and then, so that window shrinks, and I'm just wondering if there's any way to look into the timeline. I couldn't have expected it to happen this year, you're just starting in July, so I'm not even, it's not a criticism, I'm just wondering if we could think about the process and going forward and how that might expand our window a bit. Yes, and June eleventh.
So if we have a meeting in June, and we have all that set, we'll have really from July, the, you know, through the next April.
Yeah, and even though the timeline, sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Even though, um, even though we're just doing this piece now, I did my observation at convocation, which was the very, you know, it was like, couldn't be much earlier, um, thinking, okay, well, I had, we had the, the entry plan in August, and I was like, the goals are gonna be somewhere around this stuff, so, um, it does make it, I mean, it, it seems shorter than I think it actually will be reflected in the observations, because you already did one too, didn't you?
Yeah, I did.
Yep, I did in September, it's the same thing, actually two, because I also attended a superintendent coffee hour, so there were two.
Look at that.
I know, exciting.
There you go, there you go.
I know. But I think it is more helpful too, it's more helpful of observations of now than like in May.
Yeah, when it, as I mentioned earlier, the scrambling at the end, if we can, yes.
So Andrea, to your, to your question, we, I feel like every year we've been trying to do that better. And with things that arose over the last years of like the T-ticket, school piece and, you know, tho- those things kind of, though we had all the intention of meeting in the summer and starting everything, things got pushed off. So we're actually kind of right on track right now and we will really aim for, starting in June, to establish. So then by the time September is, the goals will be established and ready and can be shared right in the beginning. So, yeah.
Okay.
Can I say one more thing?
No, yes, you may.
So that will mean the, it's a question, actually. Will that mean then that the evaluation subcommittee for next year may need to be set earlier? Or will the, no, we could just use this evaluation committee to start that meeting? Is that how we're gonna do it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or you could establish subcommittees right after the election.
Okay.
Because you're, you're the only one up, right?
Right, I'm up. You're up and Bill's up.
Right. Oh, right, it's only one person on the committee.
Right.
Okay, sorry, thanks.
Okay, well, thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Putting those together and thank you for the different colors of paper too.
Yes.
Makes things sense.
Yeah, it's really helpful that it's there.
Yeah, I'm a book reader.
You get all credit on that. We like colored books.
Okay, so, um, next we, and I'm, you know, I'm a timeaholic, ripping you guys eternally, but tonight especially, routine business. So we have the minutes to approve?
Make a little bit of a moment, a second.
Okay, I have one little correction. It's that, it was Melissa who reminded everybody where the next meeting will be. Not that that's dire, but, okay, it said that I did, but, yeah. Just for the sake of that. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, extensions or nays? Okay, now we'll have the superintendent's report.
So first I shared with you, this is Commissioner Riley. I've called a call of arms, I don't know, you know, that he did, but when you really read it, I mean, I feel like this is what he's saying. You know, it's, it's level one for some. Massachusetts has been leading the nation and it's, you know, basically, you know, stating if it, if they were their own country, Massachusetts their own country, they'd be leading many countries. And so, and that's great, right? It's, but what he's really pointing out, that, that there are inequities and that we really need to look at the opportunities for achievement for all students and that we're really drawing down. And I think this, it actually does a really nice job of, of sharing that information across Massachusetts. I've shared it with the central office team and we've already actually discussed it. And then in two weeks, we will, we pass it out to the principals and then we'll be discussing it again with them. And then we are looking at what data pieces that are mentioned in here that align with the, we can't pull all the data, it's not even possible for us to pull at the, the district level. But what we can, we're gonna take a look at. And so at some point at one of the meetings, we're gonna wanna share what the data, or what we glean from the data, from that. But, and, you know, some of the pieces, we don't know, we haven't looked at, you know, but others like the achievement data, you know, we certainly have. But there are, I think, some, some important things and I think that we're not gonna get better, as Commissioner Riley has said, until we talk about it, right? We, we put it on the table, we talk about it. And I think this was one of the charges, I think, that you had given for the new superintendent or the message I got through the interviews, is that we wanna, we wanna focus on, you know, equity here. And so I think this is, just kinda was aligned with that. So I wanted to share that with everyone. Next, as we mentioned, you know, every month we are recognizing our different employee groups. And so in November, we have November twelfth to sixteenth, recognize as the National Psychologist Week. So we want to, along with, we started this in October because actually those were the first ones of the year. We just want everyone to know what, how proud we are of everyone and so are psychologists included. We are actually starting something new. I had the pleasure of talking with Steve Winther from the Enterprise. And we are going to do a monthly feature of adults. I had been reading in the paper how the paper had been featuring the students and I really enjoy the students. And so we thought maybe we would wanna have a unsung hero in our district featured, you know, monthly throughout the, the year. So you can, I believe, very soon, I thought this week, next week, we should see our very first one being featured. So I don't know if we should wait for a surprise or if I can go ahead and tell everyone who got nominated and, and what do you think?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, okay. So it was unanimous, everyone wanted to recognize Andrea Burns. She's been in the district for a long time, she has workers. And so, and she's really doing some really great things around the nutrition and food services. So Steve's gonna be interviewing her and so we'll be saying, so we're gonna, we're gonna do, uh, face a Fama Public Schools monthly, so we're excited about it.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. The athletic field, I'll be presenting tonight with the update. I gave you the, you have the presentation in the packet. And you also have the timeline that I will share, both of which are draft. And just wanted to make sure that you had that statutory report on the field. We, Kathleen Rude and I went out to the national seashore with some of the students. And that was one of the concerns from all the families, was to make sure that we keep that national seashore. So I wanted to understand what it was all about. I was actually very impressed with the students. And just, they were very engaged and they were learning and it was exciting. And it was nice to see them all, a whole class of students just really getting along and learning together. So it was, it was actually really neat, so, but I'm glad we're doing that, it's a good thing. So Mary Gans and Sonya Tellier and I myself went up to Upper Cape Regional Technical School to take a tour so that we can understand the programs that are being offered, what the crossover programs are. And, and we have, we, actually, they allowed me to ask every time I went into a classroom, how many Fama Public School students do we have here? And they'd raise their hand and I got to talk with them about how they're doing, but, you know, why they chose the program that they chose and such. So it was actually a nice visit, so, and we have a better understanding of that. And, oh, Halloween, I actually got to visit two parades at Mon Hall and East Fama. They scheduled them, so I got two, and one in the morning, one in the afternoon, I like that. But it was really great just to see everyone dressed up, the adults and the students. And I have to say, there were the parents and the community also that were watching, also dressed up. And so it was just, it was really a great, it just feels like it's so fitting for Fama anyway. It was, it was a lot of fun to watch the kids, so it was good. And then we are doing tech walkthroughs. Cindy and Sonya and, and I, we are visiting a classroom so that we can understand, it just kinda goes along with our new tech for learning, but trying to understand how technology's being used in the district. To understand, have a baseline so we can understand where we need to go. And that then comes for, with a lot of the learning that, when we attended the, the conference. And so today I specifically got to see a classroom where one of the teachers went to the conference, brought back, well, he actually did two of the things. The, the podcasts where students are interviewing adults. And he's done two this week, which was really amazing. And today he did a mystery Skype with a classroom in Texas. And so I got to observe and just that whole process, they, they tried to figure out where the other classroom is. And, and so where, where they live, and so they have to narrow it down. So they have to understand jog very quickly, they have to answer questions. And it went really well and the kids were very excited. They, they identified the Texas school before the other identified. But I have to tell you, their class, we were narrowing right down on, and they were so excited that this classroom was on Cape Cod. And I was like, so, that was a lot of fun. So, you know, and that was learning, you know, that came out of the, the conference. So November eighth, ninth and tenth, along with several people here, I attended the MASC conference. And then I would like to share Sonya's report that would have been tonight. So if I could take a few minutes, there's a blue sheet, probably, this is Sonya's reporting. And she is with her cohorts, this is the policy cohort, she's joined us this year. So she's sorry she can't be here tonight to share, but I'll try to do a good job for her. I think the most important thing, if you zero in on the last ten years, we have, you can see that the percent of students that first, that has, the first language is not English. And ten years ago, we were at two point eight and this year we are at six point eight. And so that is quite a growth. In the second column, these are the students that are actually learning the English language. And so ten years ago at a point nine and now at a three point one. And that three point one represents a hundred and five students this year that we are helping them to, to learn English. So the other, there are student learning opportunities. Christine Nicholson is putting together a summer program. It'll be a student learning program for students of English language learning. We've had our first parent engagement series. There'll be a series of, I believe, six this year, yes, six. And we've had the first one, which a small group did attend and we hope that they grow over time. But they're really for the family members to attend and to learn about opportunities for themselves and for the students. And then our SEI, the Sheltered English Instruction Professional Development continues. There was a kickoff in the spring. We have three cohorts going on. We have a classroom of educators from pre-K to twelve. We have one cohort for specialists and then one for the counselors and nurses. So that everyone is well-versed in the understanding of what it, what it means to, to learn a second language and how to support these students. And one second, I guess.
Other question, on the student learning opportunities, what are the grades that those opportunities are offered? K through twelve or?
So that's a very good question and I don't know that, so we'll ask Sonya. We'll have, we'll do a follow-up and make sure that we, we ask that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, Lori? Yes?
I'm going back a little bit. I love the idea of the unsung hero feature. And you were saying that you take nominations for that. Is there a process for that and people will submit?
So the, the first one was done by the administrative team. So the principals and the central office, we talked about it. And it was, it was unanimous, the thing. So we just talked this morning in central office about how we wanna proceed. So we think that we're gonna actually have the principals kinda nominate because they know their buildings well, so to nominate and kinda give their, you know, spill as to why this person should be recognized and then we'll decide as a team. So, so it'll kind of-
So you could maybe submit, if there's somebody else in the community that thinks this would be a great person, they could submit that then, name, child, principal?
I certainly think that would be a wonderful idea, if somebody does. So yes, if you know someone, please get out there or anyone. I think that's great because, yes, that's what we're kinda looking for. Are those people that help us keep the, the doors open every single day and helps our students and, but may not be the, the obvious person that everyone knows. I think that's who we wanna start recognizing, so.
Yeah, on the student learning opportunities, we have a summer program and I'm assuming, just looking at this, that it is a Title III federal entitlement grant that takes care of this. Now, do we project that as hopefully being ongoing? Or do we look at this as a grant and say, oh my God, it's a grant and you only keep a grant for so long?
Well, mine, we just recently have started receiving Title III because of the number of students.
Okay.
So as long as our students say, you know, the same or increase, I can't imagine it's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just get curious.
Have we confirmed?
I get curious and concerned when there's anything to do with grants being, but new money's good.
New money, new entitlement grant.
But the amount might be less.
I understand.
Okay, thank you, Larry, Lori, first I can. Okay, so a report from the chair. I had a suggestion that because Andrea and Leah and Kelly and myself and Lori and Sonya all went to the, and John, sorry, John, went to the conference, that maybe we could have some, carve out some time in one of our, at our next meeting to maybe break out a little bit of a highlight or something, okay?
That's great.
Yeah, I'm sure people wanna talk now, but I'm just looking at signing it into town meeting and everything. So if you all think that, then we'll try to work it into, hopefully the next agenda when it's fresh on everybody's mind. I'm just gonna say I went to one of the sessions-